The Mayor and City Council welcome you to the Peoria City Council Meeting. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. If you would like to address an issue that is on the agenda, or if you would like to speak to the council regarding a non-agenda item, please complete a speaker request form which can be found in the front lobby of the Peoria City Council Chambers, or in the tray to the left of the speaker's podium. Please place the completed speaker request form in the second tray to the left of the speaker's podium labeled "Request to Speak." All speakers will have three minutes to complete their comments. A countdown clock is easily visible on the left side of the wall behind the City Council dais. Only items listed on the agenda may be addressed by the council. Since items presented as part of the speaker request have not been listed on the agenda, and due to the requirements of the open meeting laws, the council will be unable to respond to items presented as part of the speaker's request. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time in the order that the forms were received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Peoria City Council Meeting.
Peoria City Council Meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Youth Council Liaison Boden.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Binzbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leone.
Here.
Council Liaison Boden.
Here.
And Council Liaison Comodjo.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council Meeting of October 20th, 2015. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Consent Agenda. Tonight's Consent Agenda includes liquor licenses or other types of items that require a public hearing. If there is a member of the public present who wants to address a public hearing on the Consent Agenda, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. This item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and heard during the normal course of the regular agenda. Is there a member of the public who would like to address a public hearing on the Consent Agenda? All right, seeing none. Council, are there any items to be removed from Consent? Do I have a motion on Consent?
So moved.
Second.
Right, council please vote. Consent passes unanimously. We will now move on to new business. Item 10R, Acquisition of the New River Utility Company. Staff report for Mr. Swenson.
Yes, this is a continuation of the discussion that the council has had with respect to the acquisition of the New River Water Utility. Tonight, there are several items embedded in this action, and our city attorney Steve Kemp will speak to this item.
Mayor, council. The council has previously taken a number of actions to proceed with the acquisition of the New River Utility Company, including at the last meeting, the approval of the terms and conditions of the loan agreement with the Water Infrastructure Financing Authority of Arizona and the appropriate budget amendment. We're now really coming to you with the final package to make these steps happen. Now, this is a little bit of an unusual transaction in that the city is initially acquiring the stock of New River Utility. And so upon completion of the first phase, the city will be 100% the stockholder of New River Utility. And the first document before you is the approval of that stock purchase agreement. Now, once the city acquires stock, under the Arizona Constitution, we cannot be a stockholder in a company on an ongoing basis. So the city will be proceeding with the second phase of this transaction, which is the council authorization of an asset purchase agreement, where upon the actual city of Peoria is going to be acquiring from the company owned by the city of Peoria, i.e. New River, all of its assets, and that process does have to be approved by the Arizona Corporation Commission. So the resolution that authorizes execution of the asset purchase agreement by the city is also authorizing the city to file all of the necessary proceedings with the Arizona Corporation Commission, which will allow us to terminate the certificate of necessity, which is the company's permission to operate from the Corporation Commission and dissolve the company. And once that occurs, the company no longer exists. And then the asset purchase agreement is included within your packet. And finally, this is a bit unusual in that we are asking you as the city council, and we will be asking the governing board of New River, to authorize the city attorney's office to represent both parties in this transaction. This is only the second time in my career I've ever asked this of the council. In this particular case, there are no conflicts. The interests of both parties are the same, which is to go to the Corporation Commission and terminate the certificate. But ethically, as a lawyer, I have to have both parties consent in order to do that. So that's why that item is on the agenda, is to get your consent, and then subsequently, when the governing board of New River is appointed, it will be asked to consent as well. The asset purchase agreement, there is no additional cost to the city. That is simply a document that is necessary for us to acquire those assets from New River in order to file the proceedings before the Corporation Commission. Now, during the period of time that this is pending before the Corporation Commission, we will be operating, not meaning we, the city, will be operating New River Utility Company as New River. The city will be providing all of its services, the city will be doing the things necessary, but the company still stays New River until the Corporation Commission approves the action to terminate its certificate and dissolve the company. And we intend on closing, based on council approval, on the asset purchase agreement on November 5th. We would expect to close on the Water Infrastructure Authority Financing on November 30th. And then we would expect to file the necessary documentation before the Corporation Commission on November 5th as well. And after those filings occur, there are some notices to customers that occur, and those will occur within the next two to three weeks after November 5th. And then we will simply be waiting action on the Corporation Commission docket for a consent item. And normally that process can be somewhere between 90 and 120 days. And that's just simply because of the number of actions that the Corporation Commission has pending in front of it. And with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay. Thank you, council. Are there any questions for Mr. Kemp? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, mayor. So Steve, you said November 5th, it becomes the city of Peoria's water?
Yes, on November 5th, we were closed on the asset purchase agreement, and essentially while the company will be in existence, the city will be behind it, actually doing the functional things to operate the company. It will be, if the, the company will still be sending out bills, but it will be the city who will be behind it in this interim period while we're waiting for the Corporation Commission to act.
So between now and the 5th, November 5th, we'll be sending out notices to the residents letting them know this change, and then come November 5th, if there's issues, will they be, or November 6th, they'll be contacting the city at that point?
Yes, we have a very active-
Or will they still have the ability to contact New River?
No, we have a very active program. The staff has been, both the utility staff and the finance staff have been working on this, so that literally on November 5th at 5:01 PM, if somebody has a leak, when they contact whether it's New River's number or the city's number, they will get a response. And so this has been something that the finance department, the city attorney's office, utilities department, all of the relevant departments involved have been already working through these issues, so that literally the goal here will be that on 5:01 PM, and they close the business on November 5th, that there is an immediate smooth transition in terms of people being able to access and get their concerns addressed.
Thank you.
Council, any further discussion? All right, do I have a motion?
I motion. Second.
All right, council, please vote on item 10R. It is unanimous. The next item is Agenda Item 11R, Establishment of an Ad-Hoc Charter Review Committee.
This item was originally discussed for the first time when the council first got together after the last election, when Mayor Carlet was seated with new council members and discussed new initiatives and opportunities that you wanted to address going forward. You reiterated the importance of this item in your council goals workshop and have discussed it on numerous occasions since. So what we have before you is the beginning of the review process, and I'll turn it over to Tammy Shree from my office, who'll give a brief staff review.
And Tammy, before you get started, I just want to make a couple comments, because we started this at my initiation last March, when I gave my State of the City speech. I specified that this is one of the items that I want to accomplish, and so I'm really pleased that we're getting started on this right now. It's, the city charter is basically our constitution, our governing document, that holds together our city, if you will, and it's extremely important that we get our document back to a point where it is cohesive. Laws have changed, there have been some amendments made in time. This document was originally created in 1983, and it has not had any kind of formal revisions and edits since 1992. So it is time. But it is not only time that we get all the puzzle pieces put back together, it's also time that we get our citizens involved in this. This needs to be a transparent process, where we can bring the citizens in, have them take a look at how their city is put together, how it is governed, you know, from the inside out, and have them, you know, make judgments and make sure that this is, that we are doing things the way they want us to, and that we are doing things that makes sense. So if you change one amend, you know, if you make an amendment to the city charter, but you don't change the two or three other ordinances that are attached to that, all of a sudden, we are disjointed, and we're not functioning the best way that we should be. So those are the kind of things that we really need our citizens to look at, and to make sure that we are running our government as efficiently as we can. We also need to put in place a system of changing our city charter on an ongoing basis. You know, doing these one-off kinds of things and not making sure that everything is tied together doesn't serve anybody. It doesn't serve the purpose of our city, and it leads to mischief. It can very much lead to mischief. Mischief, we don't want people just, you know, haphazardly making changes to such an important document. So we need to put in place a process that has the citizens of Peoria in it permanently. And so if somebody wants to make a change, you know, they can talk to the city council about it, then they can go before a citizens committee and make sure that it is properly vetted, and then that change can then go on the ballot. I mean, all of these changes have to go on the ballot, but that way we will know that it's gone through the proper process, and our citizens will be involved all throughout, all the way through. And so that's why I want to do this, and so I appreciate, you know, all the work that you have done, Tammy, putting this process in place. So if you wanted to talk a little bit more about the details of the process, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor, council, we are suggesting that we council together an ad hoc committee, citizen committee, to review the State of the City Charter. As the mayor has mentioned, a comprehensive review of the city charter has not taken place since 1992, which is 23 years ago. The goal of the comprehensive review would be to ensure consistency with best practices and policies, but it's not to change the fundamental principles of the city charter, such as the county manager, excuse me, the council manager form of government, or the council district system. We're suggesting that, again, an ad hoc committee charter review be put together. In regards to a timeline, we'd like to see an ad hoc committee put together by members appointed by December. The committee would meet starting in January and would complete the review by April. If there's any recommended revisions to the city charter, the committee would hold a public comment meeting in May to obtain input from the, of the proposed revisions from the public. And then in June, the committee would come to the council and provide their recommendations, if any, to the city charter. And with that, that's my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Well, all right then. Seeing none, can I have a motion? Council, please vote. It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Call to the Public for Non-Agenda Items. If you wish to address the city council, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. I do have one request to speak from Mr. James Dibler. Would you please, would you please come up to the podium? State your name and city, for the record, please. Okay.
Hello. Hello. I am James Dibler, and I came from Phoenix, Arizona. I am going to school at Arizona State University West, and I work for Glendale Community College bookstore temporarily. Sorry, there's, sorry, the wrong one. Hello, I am James Dibler. I came from Phoenix, Arizona. I am going to school at Arizona State University. We need to extend Bus Route 90 on Olive Avenue from 67 Avenue to Olive Road for Glendale Community College students going to school, work, and home every day. Finally, I am looking for scholarships to keep me in school at Arizona State University in downtown Glendale. My father refused to pay for my college tuition. Also, Trill was helping me out on getting scholarships for me to keep me in school. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. All right, we'll now move on to reports from city manager. Mr. Swenson?
Thank you, Mayor Carlet. Two reports this evening, and the first will be a presentation by Lisa Estrada from my office. You know, at the last council meeting, Councilmember Patena mentioned that he had received the award at the Valley Forward Crescortia Celebration, and I wanted Lisa to come down and give a little bit more information about that. We were very honored to be recognized for this award and the hard work of not just Lisa as our, as our staff leader, but staff from all across the organization who have worked to make sustainability really part of the Peoria DNA, you might say. So Lisa?
Mayor, council, last month, the City of Peoria Sustainable You Program, as Carl mentioned, was presented with the coveted Crescortia Award for Environmental Education and Communication in Arizona Forest Annual Environmental Excellence- Awards Event. As you know, the City of Peoria values the pursuit of knowledge, and Sustainable You is the manner in which we can deliver that. Sustainable You is an environmental education-based initiative open to all of Arizona residents to educate, demonstrate, and empower citizens to become better-informed consumers while enhancing their quality of life. Through Sustainable You, we believe we can work together to build a symbiotic and sustainable community. The slides before you provide examples of the wonderful environmental literacy programs we provide, whether it is for elementary school-aged children in the Kids Eco Explorers science-based program, or our general adult education program, where we have experts share their knowledge on gardening, soils and composting, energy efficiency, and who would have ever thought, a workshop on rainwater harvesting, especially after all this rain. I'm also excited to share with you our partnership with Arizona State University School of Sustainability graduate students to provide our green teens, which are our future leaders in sustainability, another science-based environmental education program at the main library, which is going on now. And finally, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Eric Wilson for his contribution as a City of Peoria's garden guru. He receives countless emails from residents asking for guidance related to their challenging issues with their landscape or gardens. And Eric, under John Sefton's leadership, has been also instrumental in the community garden and the demonstration garden in front of City Hall. This January, we will be having a culinary workshop under Sustainable You called Clean Cooking with Garden Greens, which is meant to go hand-in-hand with the community garden. Mayor and council, that concludes a brief overview of an abundantly successful program that is only made possible through your leadership and encouragement to be creative, innovative, and forward-thinking. Thank you, Carl, and our executive team for this great opportunity to deliver such a great resource to our residents. Thank you.
And thank you for your leadership and enthusiasm. We really appreciate it.
Excuse me, Lisa, before you go away, that, that award is so beautiful. Can you hold it up and show everybody? It's really kind of a work of art, and winning it is a really big deal, I have to say. So congratulations. It is, it's a huge accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item I have is an update on upcoming events, and, you know, the council is accustomed to seeing John Sefton come down and talk about all of the events, and, you know, his enthusiasm is also infectious. But, you know, we're, particularly in the fall, we have so many different events that are coming up and that are planned for. I asked Bo Larson and our Communications Department to put together a little video tonight to show the upcoming events. So, no offense, John, you do a great job, but we're going to dress it up a little bit.
The City of Peoria is proud to present some exciting upcoming events. First up, Peoria's long-running Halloween Monster Bash on Friday, October 30th, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM at the Peoria Sports Complex. The little ghouls and goblins will be out in force in a safe alternative to trick-or-treating. The traditional parade of costumes is always a crowd favorite. It begins at 5:30. The Monster Bash features inflatables, carnival games, climbing wall, haunted house, scary science, entertainment, make-and-take crafts, and so much more. Parking and admission are free. Attendees are encouraged to bring a donation of canned food to benefit St. Mary's Westside Food Bank Alliance. The City of Peoria, along with our entertainment in Arizona PBS Channel 8, is gearing up for our third Eight's Great Food Fest on Sunday, November 1st, noon to 3:00 PM at the Trilogy Country Club in Vestancia. Eight's Great Food Fest is a foodie delight in exploration with a special focus on the America's cooking pastime, grilling. Eight's Great Food Fest also showcased plenty of local favorite dining spots and a one-ticket-for-all drink and sampling experience. Admission to the Eight's Great Food Fest is $30, which includes wine and beer tastings. Tickets can be purchased at azpbs.org/foodfest. Peoria is proud to host the inaugural exhibition of Take Me Home Huey, created by artist Steve Maloney, as the central theme of this year's Veterans Day event scheduled for November 5th through 7th at Peoria's Rio Vista Recreation Park. The heart of the project is a contemporary sculpture repurposed from a Boneyard Huey helicopter, which was shot down in 1969 while on a medevac mission in Vietnam. Its mission is significant, to honor Vietnam veterans, inspire conversation, promote healing, and help raise awareness for post-traumatic stress. The sculpture will be located in the park next to the Veterans Memorial Wall and available for viewing 24 hours per day throughout the weekend, with several events planned. On Thursday, November 5th, the exhibit opens in Rio Vista Park following a special invitation-only unveiling and reception. On Friday, November 6th, there will be two multimedia presentations at Rio Vista Recreation Center hosted by the city. At 10:00 AM, there is an artist introduction and history of the Huey helicopter in Vietnam. Following the presentation, attendees are encouraged to visit the sculpture and ask questions of the artist, as well as veterans who flew on the final mission. That evening, starting at 6:00 PM, former Peoria Mayor Bob Barrett will lead a special post-traumatic stress panel discussion, following an overview of the Take Me Home Huey project. Then on Saturday, November 7th, at the Rio Vista Recreation Center is our traditional Veterans Day 5K run, starting at 8:30 AM. Following the race at 9:30 will be the awards ceremony and breakfast. For more information, visit peoriaaz.gov/RioVista, or call 623-773-8600. If you love old Beatles, not the little band from across the pond, but the Herbie the Love Bug kind, break out the tie-dye and get to Pioneer Community Park for the 2015 Volk Stock Music Festival and VW Car Show. This festival will celebrate the cool vibe that made Woodstock famous with live music and a fun festive atmosphere, and of course, the coolest cars from the era, VWs. It all happens beginning Friday, November 6th, through Sunday, November 8th. This free event is sponsored by Toys V Dub Club and Peoria's own Lundys Peoria Volkswagen. Registration is $25 for show cars on the grass. Learn more at volkstock.com. And finally, if you want to give yourself a true challenge, take on the inaugural Copper Hills Four Peak Challenge, sponsored by the Copper Hills Church in the West Wing community. This event will challenge participants to traverse Peoria's four mighty hills, Sunrise, Calderwood Butte, East Wing, and West Wing, on Saturday, November 14th. West Wing Park, along with the newly completed Copper Hills campus, will play host to the base camp for the hikers, along with the after-party, with music, food, and fun activities. Registration is $20 for adults and $10 for children ages 6 to 17. Register online at fourpeakchallenge.com. Proud to present some exciting upcoming events.
Well, that's a lot. Okay, we will now move on to reports from city council. We'll start with Youth Council Liaison Boden.
Thank you, mayor. So we had some exciting new additions to our youth advisory board, and we're very excited for the insight and the new perspective that they'll give to our board. As we look towards planning more volunteer opportunities, it's something that we are focusing on now, and also engaging in Peoria events, like a lot of the ones that we just saw. And we're also looking forward tomorrow to our Youth Town Hall at Rio Vista, and we're focusing on the topic of conservation, and more specifically, water. And so we're excited to try out some different skills to get conversation going, and to learn leadership qualities and solve problems. So it should be really fun and a good opportunity. So thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Binzbacher.
Thank you, mayor. Congratulations on the Environmental Excellence Award. That's fantastic, a lot to be proud of. I want to, lots been going on this month, a lot of different events. We've had a handful of different meetings in the Mesquite District. One in particular I want to mention is the census. We had a community meeting regarding census. Julie Ayers was there and did a great job answering questions, and is obviously very well-versed on that subject. Also there for another social event in our retirement community, but the feedback I'm getting is that people feel like they're seeing the message, they're hearing the message, they want to be counted, and they're opening their door. So I think, you know, what we're doing is working, and I'm, like I said, getting positive feedback about that. So thank you for your presence out there in my district and everywhere, I'm sure. Also, we had a bike club meeting where we were talking about their safety on the road, and that's been a big area of concern for the constituents in my district, particularly in the retirement community, where they have a bike club. And Andy Granger and his team were all there, there was a handful of them there, not just supporting me, which was fantastic, but they did such a great job of sending a very strong message to our residents, our citizens there in the Mesquite District, that their safety is important to us, and that we are looking at ways to address that for them. And I think it was huge, it was very successful, and a huge stride towards continuing to work with them and keep things feeling positive. So we're taking care of them, and thank you for that. Vestancia Elementary School was just awarded, that happens to be in the Mesquite District, it also happens to be a school that my family personally opened many years ago when we moved to Vestancia, almost 10 years ago, actually, and they were just recognized with a National Blue Ribbon Award for their academic excellence, and their improvement, the improvement that they have shown in academics. This is a huge, huge recognition for not just Peoria Unified School District, but also for the City of Peoria, because there are over 100,000 schools, K through 8 schools in our country. Only 332, 34 schools were recognized, only four in the state of Arizona, and one of them is right here in Peoria. them is right here in Peoria. So not only does that help us improve our story about what a wonderful place it is to live, work, play, grow in Peoria, it really does speak volumes to our commitment to education and relationships that we have with the school district. It was tremendous. Strong schools mean a strong city, strong communities, and it really does help our marketability. We have an A-rated school district, and that's huge for the future of Peoria and our economic development. Very, very proud day. Maybe you have more to add to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Patena?
Nothing, Mayor.
All right. Vice Mayor Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. On the 10th, I attended a breakfast over at the Ventana Yachts Yacht Club where there was over 30, 30 members of the Purple Hearts Club. They are members of an elite group that are all awarded the Purple Heart and they have chosen the Ventana Lakes Yacht Club as their new meeting place. They come from all over the state and they chose Ventana Lock, Ventana Lakes Yacht Club as their new home. So I was very proud to represent Peoria and just listen to some of the amazing stories that these veterans had. It was just a great afternoon. Later that afternoon, I, I attended the Keep It Safe Affair over near my house and the turnout over there was just phenomenal. It just continues to grow every year. On the 12th, I was on hand with the mayor and councilman Patena at the New River Trail Dedication in Glendale. This is just another amenity in a long list of amenities that Peoria residents can partake in. It connects 18 miles of our trails to over 25 miles of trails across the valley. And it lets bicyclists, equestrians, walkers, joggers to just come out and, and enjoy what not only Peoria, but the whole West Valley has to enjoy. So I just encourage everybody to come out and enjoy those great amenities. On the 13th, I did attend the National Blue Ribbon Award. What you failed to mention was just the enthusiasm of those kids. The, it was awe-inspiring. The band was incredible and the steel drums, Mayor, I'd love to invite the steel drums to come perform for us sometime here. Maybe Bridget can arrange that, but they were, they're a phenomenal group of individuals. So what a great opportunity for us to enjoy their talent. And lastly, this last Friday, I was able to attend the Special Olympic, Special Olympics opening day over at Sunrise Mountain Pool. Even though the weather was not cooperating, I spent a couple hours just watching some of the best and brightest of not only Peoria, but of the entire state compete in swimming events. And the kids, adults, were just, I mean, it's infectious to watch these individuals compete. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to stay all three days because the weather didn't cooperate, but congratulations to all of the participants and the winners. You guys are all winners, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Finn?
Just a few items. I'm not going to get up on my soapbox about the importance of education to our city, but I'm going to agree with everything that Councilmember Binsbacher mentioned about education, so I'll leave it at that. I also want to take an opportunity to thank our public safety for all that you guys do. I try to do that, acknowledge you as much as I possibly can because what you guys do is phenomenal. And to hear from our officers today that, that citizens are actually coming up and thanking them and complimenting them for what they do is just fantastic. You see what's going on out there in the world. I think that's just great that our citizens are acknowledging our public safety out there. And I know the firefighters had a wonderful save this past week, which, you know, kudos to them. That would have been one person that was not on our planet anymore had they not been there. So thank you for all that you do every single day that you guys go out there to fire and, and police. So thank you very much for that. Two reminders, I mentioned last council meeting, I want to mention it again, there's a event at Kiwanis Park on Saturday morning. If you want to come out and volunteer and help put together some of that playground equipment that is getting put up there, there is a free event, it is free, you can come for free and participate and help out. And then there's also, unfortunately, at the same time, but no less important, Neighborhood Pride that I had mentioned last week. And the amount of volunteers that are already set up to be there is absolutely mind-boggling. I'm actually concerned about parking, to be quite honest with you, where people are going to park. But I encourage you to come out, that event is also free to you to participate in. So come on out and help with Neighborhood Pride and help clean up a neighborhood. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for tuning in to watch us conduct the city's business. I had the pleasure last Wednesday of hearing Dr. Denton Santorelli speak. As most of you know, I'm sure, he's the superintendent of Peoria Unified School District. I too am so proud of Vestancia, but the school, but also so many of our schools in Peoria Unified are just doing a great job. I feel the teachers really are the unsung heroes of our world right now, at least in, in the United States, because they're carrying such a load, such a responsibility for the future with those young kids. And they're teaching so much that I don't think had even been invented yet when I was in school because we certainly didn't know about it. But they're doing a great job and I just want to remind everyone to vote. I certainly can't tell you how to vote, but certainly vote in the upcoming bond election, the override election for the Peoria School District. There's a lot happening in Old Town right now. Some of it's underwater as we speak since it did rain a deluge today. But come down 83rd Avenue and, and visit our garden. Don't walk through it for the next couple days without rain boots because we don't have a hard ground surface yet, so it's pretty muddy. But the seeds that were planted just two or three weeks ago now are huge lettuce and some vegetables I don't even know what they are. Other transformations are our beautiful adaptive reuse of our old fire station, our old historic fire station. Stop by any day, the doors are open and the Lucidi family, Zip and Chris are in there working. It's got a beautiful ceiling now, it's, it's got drywall, it's really coming along. That's going to be a distillery, for those of you that like that sort of thing. State trailer sales. For years, I've been asked, when are you going to do something about the Walmart, the old Walmart? Well, I would love to take credit for that, however, we didn't own it, but now a new owner owns it and they're going to have their grand opening for an RV, huge RV parts store in early November. So watch for that in the newspaper and try to come out and celebrate that. That'll, that'll be a really big deal. And with that, that's all I have. Have a great, a great week.
Thank you. Councilmember Leonie?
Yes, thank you. I just got a couple here. I just want to mention on October the 10th, we had a coffee with the cops at IHOP on the kind of 107th and Olive. It was a great turnout and the cops were all there, there was about seven, eight of them. And they were talking to each one, one-on-one, or maybe two-on-two. But, you know, the questions that was asked to them, they got the answers that they wanted from the police officers. So I just have to tell you that on these coffee with the cops, they do a great job. And the chief was there and it was just great to see, to see the chief there. You know, every, every place I go, you know, once I'm going to stop going, I see the chief there. And as far as, and I've been here for about three or four chiefs and he's about the only one that shows up at someplace. I want to thank you, chief, for being there and having your, having your team there. Also, I was at the trail with Bill Patena and John. Bill Patena said he didn't have anything to say, but he could have said that he was at the trails.
You're right.
But it was great. You know, it came right through my district. A lot of people ask me when they're going to finish it to go into, into Glendale. So I keep on telling them, they're working on it, but I don't know anything about Glendale. All I know is Peoria is completed and that's all I was concerned about. But they did a great job and I understand there's a lot more work to be done, so hopefully get it done. And it's going to be great for the joggers, it's going to be safe for the joggers, people who ride their bikes, walkers, and the kids who ride their scooters. So I, I hope they get it done and it's going to be great for the kids. On Friday night, I went to the, at the sports complex, they had the food truck, they had the food trucks there. If you've never been there, it's great. I don't know how many trucks they had there, but it'd be, I'd like to say between 20 and 25 food trucks. And they had every kind of food the chick could think of. And my wife loves lobster, so she got the lobster bun, you know. But it was great. If you haven't gone there yet, they get tables out there and they get chairs and it's just like a picnic. So go out there and try it out. I think you'll like it. They get face paint in there and everything else. So it's, it's great to, to go out there on a Friday night and have your dinner. Also, on Saturday, they had the Gains, the Gains turnout great. They always have a great turnout and the police officers and the freight department always do a great job at these Gains. Ever since I've been in the council, they always had it and it's just, just fabulous. And again, you know, all the police officers, freight department did a great job and I want to congratulate them. God bless each and every one of you and God bless America. Now we can go home early after my friend takes care.
Thank you. Now, youth council liaison Camacho?
I think that liaison Bowden really hit it on the head with the, the advisory board. We're looking to, you know, really become a bigger figure in the community and we plan on doing that through, by getting our hands in a lot of city events and I look forward to doing that in the future, right with that group. That's all I have.
Thank you. There being no further business, we are adjourned.